This May tenth of two thousand and twenty-two, at this time, we're going to call the Reverend Richard Foster, the Pastor of Grace Baptist Church at fifteen zero five California Avenue, here in the lovely city of Camden, Arkansas, to lead us in our invocation on tonight.
Would you pray with me, please? Father Heaven, we thank you and praise you tonight for all your goodness, all your grace, and all your glory. We thank you for another day of life. We thank you for the salvation that you offer us. We thank you, Father, for our city and for these you've raised up to lead and make important decisions. We ask, oh God, tonight in Jesus' name, that you would give them wisdom, that your presence and your anointing would be with them. We pray, oh Lord, that all that happens in this room tonight would happen based on your wisdom and your compassion, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Will you please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may take your seats. At this time, we will have our roll call by our city clerk, Ms. Donna Stewart.
Present.
Bill?
Here.
Lindsey Gibson, McCoy?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Morris, Ebsen, Askew?
Here.
Arkin?
Here.
And Victor Ross.
Present. All right, thank you. At this time, we will entertain a motion concerning our regular minutes for April twelfth of two thousand and twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Those in favor use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use the voting sign of nay. As have it. At this time, we will entertain a motion concerning our financial report for the month of April of two thousand and twenty-two. Is motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion concerning the finances?
Uh, I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor. Uh... That didn't go along. I'm just trying to get an understanding. On line item forty-four seven zero zero. It's, uh... Leasing payments? It's on page one. Is that something the city takes in, or is that something we are paying for?
Call the number one more time, please.
Four four seven hundred.
Lease payments, that's what we take in for what we... The spaces we lease if the technology building.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Are there any more? Is there more questions or discussions concerning the financial report? All right, those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. As have it. Thank you so much. At this time, we're preparing for audience participation. The sign in front of us says that you have three minutes. Will you please state your name when your name is called? Come to the mic. The mic is set for recording purposes, not for amplification. And will you state your name and your ad... uh, and your physical address as you prepare to make your three-minute remarks? Ms. Stewart?
First on the list is Mr. Ed Winters.
Good evening.
Evening.
Uh, dress is eleven forty-one Woodside Drive. I have four topics, so I'm going to speak quickly. Uh, first, as I did last month, I want to give my thanks to Kevin Franklin and his staff for that crosswalk painting across from Lincoln Center and the new lights. It's been long coming. Now we need to work on the street lines. I mean, um, just I know it's a problem with that. My granddaughters drive. They don't know that's a two-lane highway, you know, in both directions. At that point, there is... Can't see the lines. It's an accident waiting to happen. Uh, real quick, the memorial day parade. Mayor, thank you. Chief, please. Chief Nash, thank you for approving that. The plans are well along. It's going to be an event more than a parade at this point. Um, you're going to join us. Judge is going to join us. Police, fire departments, VA, VFW, Boy Scouts. It's amazing what's come on here. Again, for those involved, thank you. Um, two things which I'm going to ask for the city council and city employees help. The first thing is May fourteenth, this coming Saturday. Thank you, sir, for coordinating that cleanup. My wife, my granddaughters, and I are going to be participating in that. I'd love to see the city people come out to support that. I mean, I'm... I have health issues, but I'm going to be out there in shorts and whatever, doing it. It would be wonderful if we could see the city council and the city, you know, s... city people out there with us cleaning up our city. Okay? Um, I am a member of Kiwanis, something I've done since I retired. They knew I was going to speak tonight. On June fourth, they're having a Make-A-Wish Foundation fundraiser, a golf tournament out at the golf club. And they're looking for donations. They're looking for help. And they asked me again if I would, you know, come up and, and see if the city council would possibly spend some time out at the golf course, kind of show support for this. Make-A-Wish is one of their big deals, and this is one of the biggest fundraisers of the year. So if, you know, if you have time, if you can go out there, if you own a business and like to make a donation, that would be wonderful. Um, you know, they've... I forget how many thousands of dollars they're raising already. I know I'm going to make a donation. So just keep that in the back of your mind. And I hope I'm in within my three, three minutes. So honor bless any of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart?
Next is Mr. Alan Dawson.
Good evening. I'm Alan Dawson of Allen's Restaurant at one oh seven Washington. And as I believe all the alchemists are aware, and several of those in the audience about an alcohol issue that I just really by accident became aware of in January, hearing it from the ABC agent who is up at this area of the state. Well, she asked me while we were serving mixed drinks, and I explained to her that the process is too long, and I'm too old, and it's too costly, but she said, "All that has changed." And apparently, it's a review of fact. Now, all that has to happen is for your local city council to approve an ordinance whereby any and all restaurants within the city limits could apply for and dispense not only beer and wine like we do, but mixed drinks as well. You don't have to go through a lengthy process, which Kimberly Robertson is going to follow up with, explaining what she's been having to go through, the same as Denise at the Sand Barn, Teresa at the White House, and I assume the Country Club. But now, it would just be... It'd be just like us having beer and wine, except we could add the mix drinks. And as the agent pointed out, the annual permit fee, under the new rule, is way less, probably about half of what they are currently having to pay in order to serve alcohol. Plus, under the way they are set up, they have to buy their alcohol from a wholesale liquor store. But under the new regulation, everybody can purchase straight from the distributor, as we do beer and wine, which both of those would save quite a bit of money for those businesses I mentioned that are currently under the private club. And all of this was news to me, and I have not come across anybody in the city that was aware of all this change, which I think occurred in two thousand and sixteen. And, you know, I've spoken with a lawyer at the ABC, and of course, Michael Frye and the mayor, and many of you alchemists about it. And the ABC sent me a copy of, apparently, probably the first city that applied was Grabbit, and so Grabbit's name is on this. But in telling me about all this, the, uh, the agent said that Magnolia, Elvereta, and Arkadelphia had all passed and approved this ordinance or regulation as soon as it became available. Why nobody knew here, I don't know. And it... That ticks me off. But anyway, it really doesn't change anything other than all of us being able to. Some will choose not to anyway, probably. You know, several restaurants don't even serve beer and wine, but it just makes it available, as they say in the ordinance, you know, just to put everybody on the same equal footing. And I have many copies of this with me. If anybody would care to have one, I've got them written in. You're welcome to look at it. And so if it's... I think Emily's next, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
If Emily wants to come in, she can explain the private club process by which she was... You know, she had to, you know, go through to have alcohol at Postmasters. So Emily Roberts?
Emily Robertson, thirty-one, thirty-eight, Reson Road. Um, he kind of opened it up or whatever. So ultimately, it takes about a year because you'd have to have a nonprofit established and so forth to, to have a private club. And then that's got to be established one year prior, and then you'd have to do that application process, which is a pretty lengthy process, um, if you, if you want to sell alcohol or hard liquor. Um, beer and wine's a little bit easier. Ultimately, what this does for us is it streamlines it. It makes it a little bit of a easier process if anybody wants to sell something outside of beer and wine. It also lowers the permit cost. Um, I'm not exact... They have kind of a... I found several different things on the internet. I haven't actually talked to ABC on this subject lately. Um, but it's kind of a sliding scale of permit costs as far as if you have... So it's based on the seats in your... The number of seats in your establishment. Um, it also makes it where we can buy wholesale. Right now, if you buy a liquor drink in my place, I bought it at the liquor store. I paid markup and sales tax on that be... before it ever got to you. Anyway, but basically, we would still have to apply for the new permit. Um, so our old permit is good as long as we're still, you know, within compliance and all that good stuff. But we'll... If, if this does pass, we still have to apply for a new permit. Um, and at that point, it would put us in line to save some bucks. And hopefully, you know, extend that savings to, um, you know, our, our neighbors and what have you. And, and, uh, if, if nothing else, maybe our prices don't go up for a little while like everything else in the world. But, um, anyway, uh, I hope this is something that... It seems like something really easy. It doesn't change the way that we do business as a community. It does change how we do business as the business owners and so forth. But just as far as permit cost and cost of product that we're trying to...
Next question? Yes. Uh, so instead of applying for like, um, mixed drink license, whatever, from private club organization, you'll... It'll be done from ABC or?
We, we still would apply with the ABC. Currently, I hold a private club class A license. I also hold a wine, um, I don't remember the exact words for it, but also a, uh, hold a retail beer permit to the tune of twenty-three hundred and fifty dollars. There's also a city, um, license fee that we have to pay, but I assume that that probably won't change, so that's kind of a good point. Um, but we still, um, as long as you don't have any, um... You haven't been written up, and you pay your fees and all this up on time and all that good stuff, you can renew every year um, for, for your designated permits. Anytime that there's something new, um, you have to reapply. But like, that other... This is, uh, basically a, a one-page
Yeah.
um, application for the, uh... They call... What we're looking for, uh... They have a hotel, and then they have a restaurant on premise. Um, it's, it's restaurant on premise is what we're looking for instead of a private club.
I'm glad you and, uh, Mr. Dawson came up and explained that because that was going to be my question, you know? What was this and what would we, what would we be doing different that we aren't doing right now, but it's to help you all?
It actually...
As the business owner?
It helps our bottom line.
Okay, okay.
And, and potentially your pocket too, as if you can swing out.
That one's right.
Anyway, but, or your name. Anyway, but, uh, that's it.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? I might can answer. You know, be too, too crazy.
It will cut down on the, on the timeframe for us?
Definitely. It, um, as far as timeframe, if, if we have somebody that doesn't already possess a private club permit, um... They would not have to create that nonprofit organization that I... There's... These are old laws, and I don't really understand where they came from, or, or why some of them are even, you know, on the books or whatever. But they are the laws, and so that's, it's the process that we have to go through now. And, um, but anyway, right now, it takes more than a year. This would make it more possible the, along the lines of like sixty days. You still have to do a background check. You still have to do, you know, all this kind of stuff. But it definitely streamlines it. It makes it a, a quicker, less painful process.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Stewart?
Uh, Mr. Brian Smith.
Hey, good evening. City of Camden.
Good evening.
Brian Smith, two twenty-three North Street, Camden, Arkansas. All I'm addressing, uh, some old business, new business, and some complaints. Some old business of last year. I had a camper on my property, and I had somebody temporarily staying there. But I got a letter and complaints to move that camper, and, and I got that moved within the last few days. But over periods of time, I've been getting different complaints from my neighbors, and they turn into life threats. And I had to go to the police department in the last two, three days about it. And I also got some complaints against a couple of situations in my neighborhood. There's a house next door to me that's got a camper behind this abandoned house, and it's out of compliance. It's hooked to the sewer, and it's got a water connection. And there's also a car on the left side of the dead end, and that car's been there three, four months unparted. But I also got some new business. I own two properties, and I made them in the war. I'm wanting to put a fence around my property, so I don't have to work with the complaints and none of that. I need code enforcement to look and say what I can do with that fence or not. But other than that, I'm addressing these complaints and these issues and being in compliance. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Next is Mark... One minute.
That's me. Matt Dawson.
Matt? Matt?
Yeah.
Okay, what is it? Oh, the attorney.
Yes, attorney.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Adam?
I, I was trying to...
A T T Y.
I thought it was the end.
Gentlemen, I thank you for letting me speak tonight. I represent the, uh, the High Notes Hemp Dispensary in allegations against them in criminal court, but they are continuing to try to operate in this community and are feeling pressure. And I am here tonight to try to answer any questions about the industry. I have experience in representing people both in the CBD industry, the THC medical side, and the recreational marijuana in other states. I have vast knowledge of, uh, the regulations involved, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. My clients are operating an industrial hemp facility, selling CBD. It is governed by the federal farm bill. The Arkansas laws on CBD dispensary has a provision in it that says explicitly that it defer to the federal law in this area. And my clients believe, and we strongly believe, we remain in compliance with the federal law. We would like to be a presence in this community. Their sales were thirty thousand dollars a month before the first raid. They're about to recover from that, but that is tax dollars that will be leaving this community if they continues to put pressure on their business. They will go to another community. Those tax dollars will be collected by another community. I ask you to seriously consider before you take any official action in zoning or in restricting these types of businesses from this community, the impact of simply sending business down the road to another community. This industry is here. It's going to be here. It's going to be a growing industry in every community in this state. And the faster that everyone understands the industry and understands the intent to follow the regulations, the better community partners we can meet. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have about, about the product or the compliance. Yeah, my client were telling me that they owe, they own four stores. This is one of the four stores. They are opening another store right now in El Dorado. They're a big business and, uh, are going to be a regional business in this market. And they would love to stay in Camden and continue to service their customer base that they have, they have cultivated. No questions? I'll be happy to sit down. Thank you, gentlemen.
Next is Ms. Sandra Lee.
I'm running to San Luis. I reside at six oh three Texas Street, Camden. And I'm here on behalf of myself and, and a friend of mine who lives out of state, but has property here. And first of all, before I say anything, I want to say that I appreciate that the city is cleaning up and code enforcement is actually getting on to people about their properties that's going, you know, unattended. And, um, there are some people who have property here that lives out of the state, but yet, you know, they really don't know the condition. Uh, they may be hearing about that it's being serviced and, and it really isn't. But nevertheless, there is some people who would like to keep their property. And some of the, the problem is, um, code enforcement is putting pressure on people who want to keep their property and threatening to take it and sell it and actually go on on people's property and taking their property after they have been given, um, time to bring their things up to code. So I took it upon myself to just ride around just here at the city hall and see all... And I'm going to pass this around because right here, from Madison Street to Wood Street, I, I, I noted abandoned cars, property that the roof is caving in, property that the floors is caving in on the houses. I mean, right here in the, in the block of the city hall, there's abandonment going on. Now, I'm not saying that the city, it hasn't, you know, started to take some kind of action, but nothing has been done. But I'm bringing attention to a property that's located on Amnestry, that's located off of Mall Road. I don't know if any people are familiar with the grave site is, right past Williams Funeral Home. So there's some property that's down on the slope that you can't even see, that's just, you know, out of the eye sight of anybody. And the city has went in there after giving these people time, which their time at the end of June, the city has went in there and confiscated six vehicles and had them towed off of these people's property. And of the ten vehicles that they did have, the city has went in there and pulled, had some people pull out the vehicles and put them in a situation where they can't even get to them. So my thing is this. Now, if, if the building is out of code and needs some work, then send somebody in there and fix up the building if that's what you got a problem with. If the tree is falling on the house and you feel like that's a hazard, then send somebody in there to remove the tree. But what the city did was sent somebody in there to take all these people's vehicles.
It's, it's recently, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Yeah, I guess it's not the topic people want to hear about, but I'll leave that next one.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all, yeah.
Thank you. I'll, um, take this opportunity to give account of, um, some things that we've been able to accomplish in the last month and... Uh, we did attend a financial simulation at Harmony Grove School. And, uh, on last month, we also had an intergovernmental meeting with, uh, Judge McAdoo, where all of our towns and cities in Washita County came together. We had many, many, uh, Zoom calls, including Communities Unlimited. We hosted American Fidelity here. Also, the Junior Girl Scout troop from over in Harmony Grove came here. Uh, we met with Ms. Peggy Abbott, as well as SOSD, about, uh, brief counseling and offering help after one of the students from the school, uh, drowned in, uh, Washita River. We did a proclamation for Ms. Frances Hill. We had ARPA funds meet, fund meetings. We attended the Arkansas Land Community Development Group. We celebrated Earth Day with the Junior Girl Scout troop. And, um, we had fire and police testing, and we did really well in that. We hosted some mentor, uh, training to try and get some mentors in our community, uh, able to serve our youth. And also, we hosted Anytime Fitness who came, uh, to city hall. We attended the AMP meeting. Among those conference calls was the Arkansas NRCS conference call. And we also attended the Lafayette School Union, uh, meeting that they had and the AAHC Zoom call. We continue to ask our community to join us and pray. Ms. Huggins, in the passing of her, uh, sister, who is a very dedicated worker and supporter of our city. And I can pray us continue with the Merritt family and Washita County as they continue to, um, uh, seek, uh, the, uh... As they continue to do search and rescue for Mr., uh, Merritt. We ask that all of our community would join us as we continue to, uh, pray with and for that family. That is our mayor's report. We, it's already been mentioned that we're, we're preparing for the parade, um, at the end of the month. And so we're excited about that, and, uh, we're going to be in full support of that. Uh, if there's nothing else, no questions of me. We have next on our agenda, old business where there is none. For our new business tonight, that's ordinance number zero five two two. Who will present this ordinance? I'll let him just...
Orchid's number five twenty-two and ordinance repealing. Orchid's number six twelve, assessing lien on certain property located at seven 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 Bradley Fair.
Is there a motion to suspend? Motion to approve? All right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Ready for discussion.
Um, I'd like to know what are the circumstances that we're wanting to repeal the lien?
Um, for the seventh, for the whole Bradley Fair?
Yes.
She said that she bought the property, and it had the lien on it, and they tore the house down. And so she's feeling like it's unfair to her to accumulate the fees, uh, to apply owner.
I know generally, we come up against this and typically will knock it down to twenty percent of the fees. But we, we typically don't remove the lien totally, you know, completely.
Well, she offered a hundred and fifty dollars of the D D F. She sent a check and a letter as well from her attorney.
Is there any more discussion?
I, I have a question. Uh so the total lien amount is twenty-two, fifty-five, forty-five. And she's only offering a hundred and fifty?
Sorry, ma'am.
So our standard, I guess, is said is twenty percent of that. So I mean, I, I guess I need to ask the question, why are we making an exception in this case for far less than what other people have paid?
Exactly.
I don't, I don't think we done made an exception.
Well, I, I would say once the camp, I think that man was put in there is what the offer was from the, from the owner. And the council then passed, the council can move to amend the ordinance that is in front of you on the table and place a different amount on there. So, so we have done, done that. The council determines the amount, but another thing we have to, have to accept that low amount or twenty percent or, or any amount.
So if we set to twenty percent and she's only offering a hundred and fifty and we pass it, then where are we?
She'll have to pay the, the twenty percent in order to remove the lien.
And so twenty percent of that is what?
Four.
Four hundred fifty-one and nine cents. Eighty-nine cents.
Yeah.
So, so the man was up to the council, so some houses motion say, you know, we amend, change that number to four hundred fifty dollars, four hundred sixty dollars, that necessary, that's the set amount, case by case.
Well, I, I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance to um from three percent to twenty percent. And instead of the hundred and fifty dollars to four hundred and fifty dollars.
Seven of that.
We have a motion to amend and it's been properly seconded.
Any discussion on the amendment?
Is there a discussion on the amendment? Roll call.
McDonald?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Arden?
Yes.
Now the motion to approve is.
Correct, and, and so there are the uh members, the council sort of designed to do the motion to suspend the rules. Depending on how the vote went, it is possible that the rules could be suspended.
I'd like um make a motion to suspend the rules and put it up for a third and final reading.
Second, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion on the suspend, motion to suspend the rule? If not, roll call.
Arden?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Motion, that, motion to suspend the rules passes, now motion to approve. Like to make a motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion on the motion to approve? Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Arden?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Yes, sir. Four fifty-one?
Four forty?
No, it's four fifty. Four fifty. All right, we're ready now. And who will introduce ordinance number zero six two-two?
I will.
Thank you, sir.
Ordinance number six twenty-two, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, setting forth certain regulations for the sale of alcohol for on-premises consumption and for other purposes.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we go on with the motion to approve, not to suspend.
Oh, oh, um may I change my motion?
I'll withdraw my second.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and put it up for a third and final reading.
It's been moved and
Second.
Properly seconded to suspend, for motion to suspend the rules. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? At this time, we're ready for our roll call.
Arden?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve? Like to make a motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is that in the discussion on the motion to approve? Roll call, please.
McCoy?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Arden?
Yes.
Motion passes. At this time, we move to resolution number twenty-eight twenty-two, which is introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number twenty-eight twenty-two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, authorizing the court authority to apply for a grant for crane removal and warehouse renovation from the Arkansas court in order to develop a grant program.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, uh in the ordinance, and let me pull it up so I'm not getting this wrong. Uh the funds we're going to submit for is uh two hundred thousand dollars according to the resolution. Uh what kind of match is that? Do we, do we know?
Eighty, twenty?
Eighty, twenty? So, so basically two hundred thousand dollars and we would be responsible for twenty percent of that. Okay, all right, thank you.
Any more discussion? Those in favor use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use the voting sign of nay. Ayes have it on resolution number twenty-eight twenty-two. Next is resolution twenty-nine twenty-two, also introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number twenty-nine twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to purchase a tractor and boom mower through an interlocal contract for cooperative purchasing and other purposes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion?
We, we discussed this already, right? This is not something brand new?
Yeah, didn't we? That was not random.
This, this was what we discussed during the budget meetings. Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion on resolution twenty-nine twenty-two? Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Ayes have it on resolution twenty-nine twenty-two. Is there any other business before the council on tonight?
Uh mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh the Camden Downtown Network, last month I was not here, uh they did their annual report. Uh I know that they weren't able to get the uh contract in in time, but it was sent to the city on uh April eleventh. Uh I was just uh wanting to inquire as to where they were with the uh payment for, that we allocated the budget to Camden Downtown Network. I know that the contract was sent in on April eleventh and uh do we need a resolution to get that passed? Or do, you know, what, what do we need to do?
Yes, sir. We do, yes, sir. We'll take a resolution.
I think that your bill has one.
I have a copy of the service contract if uh members would like to.
So I think this would be, thank you, sir, thirty, so it's not on the agenda.
That's their service contract that was sent in.
So uh I think.
Do we need to amend the agenda, the agenda or?
I think that's what he's, right. I, I would say that he's gonna make a request to introduce that resolution.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and um to discuss this.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. We're ready for discussion. I wanna uh just ask that when we are introducing new things, i- is that my discussion? I just didn't, uh I don't know how we slipped this, but if you give me a courtesy call and let me know that when we change the agenda, I just.
It was done at six forty-five.
This morning?
This evening. That's why I was here right at seven oh one. Bella contacted me to ask me to check if we did a resolution last year and I found on May the fifth of twenty, uh twenty-one, we passed a similar resolution for Camden Downtown Network. It was in the budget for this year, twenty twenty-two. Uh in the line item, it's on the resolution uh where we approved, we didn't have the same contract, twenty-five hundred dollars. So I thought I would prepare a resolution to bring the Camden forward.
In previous years, um Camden Downtown Network submitted the contract and then a resolution, I'm not sure if it was to Michael Frye, but uh a resolution was, you know, drawn up by the city at that point.
Mayor, a question?
Yes.
Regarding the uh motion to amend the minutes, procedurally, we didn't do a motion to approve the minutes at the beginning of the meeting, so.
No, not, not amended, amended, the, the question was to amend the agenda.
Agenda, I'm sorry, I said minutes, yeah.
Add it to the agenda.
Right, so we didn't have a, we didn't have a motion to amend, I mean to accept the agenda at the beginning of the meeting.
The, the mayor submits the agenda and so that is sent out to the council and to the press. And so that covers all items that would normally be up for discussion for the council.
Okay.
And then if a council member wants to add another item to it, they have to have uh permission of the council to add something to the agenda.
Okay.
And if we're going to pass something, it's gotta be in writing. So, so we can't just uh, uh we can have a specific ordinance that requires procedurally the council to have it in writings and someone can't just say, I wanna talk about, let's say, a house over there was mislaid. I wanna pass an ordinance without having something in front of you.
Okay, okay.
So you have to have something in writing. But if there is something in writing, then the council can amend the agenda to allow uh the introduction of a new topic is what it is. Cause the mayor pointed out, he was not aware of this. Uh and so it is new to, to the council, it's new to the mayor.
Yeah, I, and, and I, and I guess that's my question. I, you know, understand, like I say, he was late and he just, just done it, but what's the fire drill? I mean, this something that couldn't have waited next month?
If we wanna, if we wanna do it next month, I'm perfectly fine with that. Uh uh the, and my apologies for not getting it in sooner. I've been on a uh business trip for the last two weeks and I just got back in town. But I just wanted to go ahead and get this on our radar, so, you know, it didn't get overlooked cause uh Camden Downtown Network, their new year starts in uh July, I believe. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, the new financial year starts in July. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, this didn't get overlooked. So if we wanna, if, if we wanna wait till, till next month to discuss it, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that. But like I said, I just wanted to go ahead and get it on our radar. And this is something that it's not new, it's, it's budgeted. Uh and like I do apologize for the uh, for the late hour of everything. But, you know, there was a little discussion last year on, I remember having a discussion on, do we need a resolution or not? And, you know, I wanted to discuss it with Attorney Frye and make sure that everything is being done correctly.
So the motion that's before us now is a motion to amend the agenda. Has it been moved and seconded? I forgot in the midst of our discussion.
It's been moved and seconded.
All right, those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Ayes have it. Now we have before us, resolution number thirty twenty-two.
Move to approve. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Again, I'll, um is there any other business before us tonight?
Move to adjourn.
Second.